All right, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, November 10, 2022 Citrus Plating Board. I need to read the statement. Citrus Plating Board is committed to providing an environment of respect to its needs. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and disadvantaged communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit these steps to support and respect our community. If opposed to your genders, your second?
Second.
Uh, favor. Everything will be a roll call though tonight because we have a member joining us by Zoom.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchard? Yes, Pritchard.
Did you call me? Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Thank you, Nana Miss Al in favor.
We're about to open a public hearing with a special private accessory dwelling, 52 Pin Oak Drive, Accessory Map Lock Block 48-2-21-H. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Fontaine here. Would you like to come onto the table, please introduce yourself or tell us about your position.
Do you have to read this first? In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9 and 11, and with Citrus zoning by law, Section 5.3, accessory dwelling special permit, and Section 940 referrals, the Plating Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, November 10, 2022, in the Slick Woods Hearing Room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant/owners Vincent and Kim Fontaine for accessory dwelling special permit for an accessory dwelling to be located in a first-floor addition of an existing single-family dwelling as property located in 52 Pin Oak Drive, Citrus. Property as shown on Accessory Map Lock parcel 48-2-51-H. Land, urban, the whole view, the planning board office, town hall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Others and other interested parties are invited to attend.
Good evening, everybody. Tell us what's going on at your house.
Vincent and I, we would like to put in this in our addition. We would live in this addition. Our oldest child and her spouse and our grandson would live in the existing building. Our, that way our family would be able to live, you know, in the property. We would have separate living spaces. And our oldest daughter and her spouse, they, they work in co-hosts. So the commute would be much better for them if they were living in Citrus. And they want to raise their child in Citrus.
Thank you. Karen?
The accessory dwelling is the maximum size that the accessory dwelling can be. It's, um, it's 750 square feet. It's more than 40%, but it meets the 750 square foot requirement. The property is also in the Water Resource Protection District. So all those requirements are going to have to be met. And I've conditioned those requirements, um, in, in the conditions.
So do you want to say one more?
Yeah, we understand that we have to make sure, um, the rainwater coming off the house, uh, goes back into the ground.
Right.
And so we've already made arrangements for that to happen.
Most people agree.
So you'll ultimately have to submit a plan when you apply for your building permit. All this is going to have to be on the building permit plan.
Well, what's the next question? Could you read it?
It is, uh, the, the addition, the existing housing addition are, is it all side at the same? It's all the same exterior finish, basically.
Uh, yeah, it's going to be all the same.
So it'll all look like the one, absolutely.
Yeah.
And, um, can you explain how the parking works?
Oh.
Sure, so the existing driveway, it can accommodate, uh, we fit comfortably right now for vehicles. So there's, um, my husband, um, my daughter and her husband, they have one vehicle. So the, the cars would be a little bit, you know, in the existing driveway.
There's no rush, that's all?
No, we, we have two car drive around.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
So they'll park on the, in the shoulder of the driveway, sort of, is that how that works?
Yeah, the driveway, it's all three cars now. And so there's, there's no, you don't have to add any more parking spaces to the ground.
And then on the, uh, the addition, is there any exterior lighting being added?
I would assume so. So the front entry, I believe, would have to have, um, light front, uh, entry, entry, I imagine.
I'm really thinking more about, like, be facing your neighbor here, on, on this side over here.
Oh, so on the, on the side, the new, the new?
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be no light on that side of the building.
Okay.
Uh, but also if you, if you look at the property, there are trees that go along the property where I can't see him and he can't see me anyways. So, uh, you can't see each other, so.
Oh, well, that's like the conditions, Steve, that every driver would have to be down on it.
Okay.
And, and the, um, the second means of degress out of this is what?
Oh, there's a, there should be a back door going up to the back deck.
So it's this deck back here?
Uh, that's correct, that's correct.
The building department care is okay with it? It's a two-story mansion.
Well, we are, we're getting a, we're putting in a full basement. And the reason why is we've got stuff. And you have, our stuff has to go somewhere. So that's why we're putting in a full basement. But wasn't for all our stuff, probably wouldn't have done that, but, uh, you'd have room for my stuff. I'd have room for my stuff.
It's time for y'all to say.
I agree.
That's, that's all, yeah.
How's that? Ben?
Um, I don't have any comments at this time, thank you.
So we only see the lot bedroom suite, is that right? There are some.
We're not, we're not.
Sure, oh, lucky, lucky.
You want your new?
Please. You want mine?
You want the all mine? I need to make the following finals of the act. One, on our form of 12, 2022. Applicant Vincent Fontaine applied for a special permit for accessory dwelling in a single-family home at the property at 52 Pin Oak Drive. Two, according, in, according to the town's city's access records and the deed, the property at 52 Pin Oak Drive is owned by Vincent and Kim Fontaine. Both by owners signed the accessory dwelling special permit application. Three, based on floor plans submitted with the application, the planning board finds the floor area of the accessory dwelling to be 750 square feet. The floor area of the primary dwelling is 1,422 square feet, according to the, to the access records. The accessory dwelling is 53% of the floor area of the primary dwelling. This meets the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings. As the bylaw allows, 750 square feet of 40% of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete, separate housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R2 zoning district and Water Resources Protection District. The proposed accessory dwelling structure meets all required set tasks, building height and yard, yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located in a four, first-floor addition to the single-family home. Access will be via a door at the front of the house and into a stairway connecting to the existing dwelling, leading to a deck. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the plot plan for 52 Pin Oak Drive in Citrus Maps by CNG Survey Company dated June 24, 2022, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling and a proposed accessory dwelling. The plan shows an existing, the tremendous driveway which can fit four parking spaces. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Amber Park appears to be divided. Nine, the applicant owners have submitted a signed notarized statement that they will continue to reside on the property as their primary residence once the accessory dwelling is complete, and they will occupy the accessory dwelling. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water and sewer. The water department has commented that a new one-inch water line should replace the existing three-quarter inch pipe that currently exists. The sewer department has commented that the accessory dwelling will require a half-inch sewer connection fee of $8,000 to connect to Town Sewer. Eleven, the application meets the standards of the Citrus zoning bylaw for the accessory dwelling special permit. Is there a second?
Second.
All of the favor? Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Thank you, Nana Miss Al in favor. I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at 52 Pin Oak Drive with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board at a public hearing on 12/17/2015. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall be, shall substantially conform to plans submitted with the application of designs by Marshall LLC dated 8/2/2022 consisting of Fontaine residence project number 22002, in Lot Edition 52 Pin Oak Drive, Citrus Mass 02066, cover sheet, demo floor and roof plans and square foot footage plans A1A3, exterior elevations A2.1, exterior elevation and sections A2.2, foundation plan details and notes A3.1, framing plans A3.2, block plan for 52 Pin Oak Drive in Citrus Mass by CNG Survey Company dated 24, June 24, 2022, April 19, 2022, subdivision plan of land in Citrus by Stendek and Taylor dated May 8, 1961, Plan Number 27679C. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. The basement cannot be finished for additional living space in the accessory dwelling as accessory dwelling is at its maximum size. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that the owner is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by Marshall first yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, zoning form appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department and other town agencies must be met prior to the occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable building height and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located in a first-floor addition to the single-family home. Access will be via, via a door at the front of the house and into a stairway connecting to the existing.
That's not mine.
Oh, I flipped over, I'm sorry.
I think we went back to the beginning.
I did, I did.
I'm sounding a little familiar.
A gentleman, really. Standards in the building, electrical, mechanical, final, go for the I want it. Seven, water connection must meet all DPW requirements of the DPW water division for accessory dwelling. The DPW is requirement updated one-inch squash service to the existing house and accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be down lighting to not shed light on the embodied properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to seven, eight AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased on the property. As the property is in the Water Resource Protection District, rooftop runoff must be designed to recharge the first inch of rainfall. Infiltration basins or trenches shall be constructed with a three-foot minimum separation between the bottom of the structure and maximum groundwater elevation. An artificial system unrecharged shall be required which does not degrade the groundwater as there is more than 15% impervious area for the site. A plan for attaining runoff requirements must be provided to the building commissioner as part of the building permit application. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk stock shall be used as necessary. Need a second to discuss?
Second discussion. Um, I would like to caution you, Mr. and Mrs. Fontaine, that number ten on the last page is, we really need to pay attention there because of where your property is and what resources is here. Um, everybody has to provide easy, so without a good cop, like, with a good engineer, should be a problem. Be advised that we'll be right back, so we kind of don't know what's going on, okay? Anybody else?
Residents of both dwellings, there should be no parking on the street.
Yeah, but it's in the standard conditions.
I know, I still want to reiterate it because I see accessory apartments and they are parked on the street.
And we have that one car anyway, so.
Right, so.
And that's what everybody gave me, anyways, there's room for at least four cars.
Yeah, I know, I'm not concerned about them. It's just that sometimes people just, oh, you know, boom, I'm parked on the street.
I hope the line you wrote, but, but anybody else?
Yeah, I think we should amend to number three.
Number three?
Further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. And I think it should be, it's just, is it allowed, period? Because there's nothing we could do to have it expand to 750, right?
That's as big as you can, yeah.
I encourage anybody to come back.
You don't want to sell the, uh, no. Anybody else? Ben?
Um, no, no changes.
Well.
Second amended.
All the favor?
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Thank you, Nana Miss Al in favor.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We have 14 days until you file, we do town work, and there's a 20-day appeal period on time after that as well. And then it has to be recorded as soon as due.
Thank you. For him scheduled, let's keep going. Discussion of voter endorsement of surety for 14 to 16 Old Country Way.
Do you have anybody coming in?
Probably, no.
Um, he didn't tell me he was coming, he didn't tell me he wasn't coming. Um, so I really jumped it out.
So can we just, oh, wait.
Yeah, so I, I kind of jumped it out. So that, the bylaws, we have the bylaws, we have, uh, we have a set of plans. I have carefully looked them over and they have gotten all the conditions. Everything that was required to be put on the bylaws prior to endorsement is on the bylaws. So I, we've carefully looked them over. Assured the estimate, he provided assured the estimate that, uh, was sent to Horace Lee Witten for review. Horace Lee Witten, um, came up with the, um, estimate of 191 or 1.5. I didn't know that, that has a 15% contingency added in that number. So I just didn't know if, um, you wanted to go exact or you wanted to put a different number. But that's up to the board.
That number looks good to me.
Okay. He, he does intend to provide bond, um, for it. So he's just waiting on the number to do the bond. And he's waiting on the, um, endorsement to then record the plans. Um, we had the pre-construction conference out there yesterday. Um, he is not, he is not, he is not authorized to start construction. The only thing, he was off, he has a demo permit, so the buildings are gone. Um, but he has not applied for his building permit yet. He should be applying for his building permit next week and anticipates construction commencing in the next two weeks. He wants to get foundations in a full winter.
He was pretty quick with the one on quarter of the issue.
Yes. He understands all the rules, um.
Fun because we put him through.
Right, he understands all the rules, he submitted all the things, um, you know, not even, he's got most of the stuff in, in truck routes, all that, all that stuff al- already because he is very eager to, um.
He learned a lot, didn't he?
Yeah, well, I think he did work him out fine.
I think, yes, but he did it the way it was supposed to be.
Right.
He pushed that a lot.
He did, he did at the beginning.
At the beginning.
At the beginning.
He came around, yeah.
I mean, and he understands, he understands the plans, so that's, um, that's a good thing. Um, this is Don McGill now. No, Robert Proctor sold the development.
We know that.
So just, you know, reiterating now. I'm surprised about it, like, how big a piece of property that is from two rooms, though. Quite big, quite bigger than I thought. Black country.
Are you ready?
Are you ready?
I move to the planning board endorse the site plan for 14 to 16 Old Country Way in Citrus, Massachusetts, prepared by Ray Consulting LLC dated May 19, 2022, with provisions for 11.2022 consisting of 72. Conditions and changes needed for endorsement have been added to the plan for site plan administrative review slash timing. Tandem parking special permit in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Rainbow Street Way, Gateway District, Rainbow Village Center Sub-District, B C N, G D G, G B C. The property was permitted by 14 to 16 Old Country Way LLC, Robert Proctor manager. The property is now owned by Malloy Hall LLC, John McGill manager. I move that the charity for 14 to 16 Old Country Way to the site plan administrative review and special permit for tandem parking be set at $191,015 based on the applicant's estimate for construction costs reviewed, reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, Janet Renado, um.
Give a second.
Second.
All of the favor? Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
And Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Thank you, Nana Miss Al in favor.
So next up, it's for me, is on the discussion slash vote of a plan change for six McDonald Terrace.
Thank you. For the record, Greg Norris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering, Bob Burwood, property owners meeting as well tonight. The property is located at six McDonald Terrace. As you know, you approved a, a mixed-use building and property as well in reconstruction. The building that's going up right behind the river shed, Ice House property. Mr. Burwood submitted an email to the board requesting essentially five changes to the site. At this point, the building is substantially complete on the exterior. The parking lot has been paved, we're kind of performing the final landscaping, uh, at the site. But the requested changes were, um, what I've outlined on the plan here. Uh, we want to install two fences on the property. I've highlighted those in pink. Um, the first one would be at the back of the parking lot, approximately 40 feet. It would run along the lot line essentially to shield the neighbor's garage. Can you point to it on?
Can you point that, I can't see that.
So right, right here is 40 feet of fence along the back edge of the parking lot. Secondly, is another fence that we were proposing along the southern lot line would start here and run essentially the entire lot line on the edge of the parking lot and then the edge of the building there. Next would be to add a peystone gravel patio on the side of the building. I've highlighted that in red. It would be a circle patio and outdoor amenity space for the property. And then lastly, at the corner of the property, approximately from here to here, we had originally proposed this, essentially it's grass surface. Uh, right now, this is, as it exists today, is riprap surface. This area is behind the CP's Pizza building and a shed on the River Shed property. It's kind of an area that's utilitarian, it's not landscaped or anywhere that you really see from the public view. It's essentially a maintenance issue of this grass that would be kind of collected for mowing purposes. But I'll pass around a couple of pictures. With riprap, it's really a low maintenance surface. Again, it's hiding from view. Uh, one of those pictures is the picture that you see as you drive by on the riffway. Really can't see the riprap. It's been in place for about a month at this point in time. So we'd ask to allow the riprap in place of grass.
Existing riprap that's there.
The existing riprap that's there.
Which is this right here?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And I have to tell you, that's not an octopus, that, that jumped right out at me. I was like, I'm sorry. But that's, yeah, that's not an octopus.
Sure, so that, that area there is essentially a, a one and a half to the one slope. It is industry practice to place riprap on slopes like that. It adds a little quimby grass if that's the requirement, but, uh.
It, it just looks like you backed up a dump truck and dumped pile of rocks.
It's this.
It's from the, hold on.
What's this area?
And so when I, when I, it's from a hill, but I'm a young.
Is that this area here?
This from Jersey.
The same as you now.
I knew.
You were just following us, so this is CP's, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I can pass this down.
Picture's taken from the CP's site, site now.
Yeah.
Why can't it be terraced?
It's never proposed to be terraced.
I don't think it was ever close to riprap, was it?
No.
We didn't specify a ground surface on, on plans.
And how do we continue your change? I have to tell you about these.
Practically, there isn't enough room to terracing. Beyond, um, beyond CP's pizza, there is sufficient area where it is terraced after, after the riprap. And that works quite well behind CP's. There is sufficient room between the back of the pizza shop and the top of the slope to do terrace.
It just looks from this that it's just literally sliding into those buildings. I mean, it's running against them.
We've had news, at least three, um, down the course of storms that have not affected it at all. It's held the place perfectly. There was always a slope behind that building.
I'm not suggesting that there wasn't, it's just that I find this to be.
So let's, let's be clear about what we're talking about, Green Bush. There's a lot of eyes on Green Bush right now. We, we know that everyone's looking at it, um. I find, actually, color was starting, but the second I drove by, because I have dump duty at my house, so I can sort of dump. And, um, I, it jumped right out at me. Um, and I, and I don't think, I don't think this is a minor change. If Minton is going to be planting the riprap, what do we plant for riprap? It's still, we're going to grow, even though you say.
There's actually quite a bit of space between the top of the riprap and the parking lot. All of the plantings that were proposed and, you know, approved on the planting plan are going to be planted. Uh, majority of them have already been put in. But all of the original plantings that you approved are still in line to be planted, and there is plenty of room for them.
What are the things that are number three, four, or five?
Those are on the planting plan, here's a legend. Three, four, and five are hydrangea, amylia, or dendrons.
Plant that in the riprap.
They're along the top of the riprap and along the sides of the riprap.
It looks like you're in it.
Yeah, and right at the top of it, essentially, right within.
They look pretty lovely.
Had to come to us about just to put riprap in here, I, I always think I would. Had to come to us about just to put riprap in here. I, I also gotta approve that. That, that would rather be approved. Just because it is the gateway to Citrus, now, I guess, on the gateway. Has anybody else provided to see it?
I have. About this, Doctor?
I did not see this.
It was in Peter Palmer's. I'm confused. Was this already here?
Yes. No, they, they installed it prior to the project.
So immediately behind the CP's Pizza, it was essentially just overgrown weeds and grass. That area got recreated associated with this project and, you know, over the barren soil, we put riprap there. You know, there were several other spots along the ripway, along the walking path over at the dump as well, where there was riprap in place. It's not that there isn't riprap elsewhere in Citrus. Again, it's kind of the industry standard on a slope like that. And it seemed where it's behind the building, it really isn't visible from the street when you're driving by.
It is what I'm coming to the road ring.
We, we can do additional plantings around it too, just screening.
Mr. Bornting, do you have any suggestions for this?
Um, I mean, I, I don't dispute that it's a standard operating procedure for helping to stabilize steep slopes. I, I also don't doubt that they'll, you know, keep the plantings at the top of the berm. I guess my concern is more, I guess what you were getting at Patty, which is it's a, it's like a very inelegant solution to a large change in grade where two property lines meet. I think that if it was shown on a plan, we probably would have proposed that a retaining wall be, be placed in that section with a nice landscaped area above and below it, rather than a kind of a steep riprap slope. So that's, that's kind of my thoughts on the matter, but I don't, I don't really know where you go from here since it's already put in.
Has it been verified that the riprap is all of the easement? Peter Palmer questioned whether, whether, whether the riprap grew for outside the landscape easement. I mean, you had a definitive landscape easement on the property. Has that been verified at all yet?
So some of, some of the riprap that was placed was placed slightly over on the Butter's property by about two feet. I believe they've remedied that. They've moved to that at this point. Other than that, the landscape easement has riprap in it. Whether it spills over onto the River Shed property, again, which Bob owns, really is a, is a moot point.
It's not a moot point. There's a recorded easement for it.
Bob's allowed to place riprap on the River Shed property, but how it needs to be placed, he owns it. He's placing riprap on a slope. But if that's the. As far as a retaining wall at this location, I don't think conservation and go for a retaining wall is adjacent to the river. It is a plan subject to coastal storm flow, which I'm gonna depend on. Typically, retaining walls are grounded on that scenario.
You'd have looked better if you were putting flat rocks. Something that was.
Armored, essentially.
Yeah, we tend to plant in and around the riprap. Provide additional screening.
It's just unfortunate. Again, it looks like somebody backed up the dump truck and dumped it.
It gets so much.
What are the solutions?
Round cover, some restriction?
You could, you could grass it essentially, put down a G M S, put, put down grass and then kind of let the grass grow. That's, it'd be difficult to maintain. That's the problem that they've had in the past where it's behind the other building. I think that's what was done in front of the golf course, for example. You see that there are regular washouts in that type of scenario with that type of thing. Very hard to maintain and keep a grass solution in case like that. It can be done, you know, I think Bob's willing to do that if necessary, but for ease of maintenance, I think riprap is a solution.
Would that some kind of, you know, ground cover, some kind as opposed to a grass that can move?
Like myrtle or one of those, acer.
I think, I don't know.
No, you're, you're probably looking for, this is a very sunny location. You wouldn't want her, you wouldn't want acer sand or something. I mean, if anything, you want something like a juniper that's gonna cover.
And spread.
Cover and spread. I, I wouldn't recommend, you know.
No, I'm just throwing that out, Karen. You're the landscape person. You know what works. But I, the rocks just don't do it for me.
Should we go through the other things? Just make sure we're okay with the fences on?
Yeah. I would feel want fences.
So maybe you could explain why, why you're putting fences on that?
So essentially, the, the fence that's at the top right corner of the property there. That's when you pull into the driveway, you're looking at the back of the Butter's garage. And they have a pile of debris behind that garage. You know, this is essentially to provide privacy for us and for them.
How big is it?
Six foot white PVC fence. The second fence is on the left-hand side of the plan. I should look at it here. It's essentially a fence that runs along the top of the slope between the River Shed property and this property. Again, to provide privacy for the residents of this building so that they're not overlooking the Ice House with, you know, lights of commercial use coming in and out of that property. There are plantings there. There are arborite along the edge of the parking lot, but the fence is just additional screening.
Then what kind of fences?
Six foot PVC.
So it's one of these reflective flare white, bright white fence?
It's a white fence.
Then you consider it something that's less reflective?
So I can tell you, I was on dear comment and this beautiful PVC fence over there, that's not like gray or black. It's very attractive. Like, you know, white rocks, white fence, and colorful, you know, it would be white.
Close. It's, it doesn't face the parking lot. It's along the side of the parking lot and along the side of the building. And it's significantly higher than the River Shed and the Ice House. It's about six feet higher, so there's no, there are no headlights really that shine on the fence.
Then will be headlights for the people that park in the parking lot?
Well, it's, it's only, it's actually thirty-two feet of fence proposed along, along the back. The, the rest is shrub. It's not gonna run continuously along the back with the partial.
I understand that, but you weren't putting a fence all along above C P C, et cetera, above the riprap. So that when your people, the tenants, come in to go to their parking spaces, there are headlights that are shining on this bright white fence.
Yeah, but they're off a plantings.
In front of the fence.
There are plantings all along the front of the fence.
Better green plantings.
I don't know. I didn't know there was an issue with the white fence. That's what kind of everybody.
The dominant fencing, every. I think it's just gonna be a bright point, star right down, right down the strip. I'm not worried about them. I'm looking at it fucking better from the other side.
The people, the other piece of property that are CP looking at that, that's like, like a giant white star right down the back of the doghouse.
It's broken up by CP's Pizza and it's broken up by the backdrop of the proposed building.
Might want to talk about that, that, that. Fuck, that's just.
And then the round area is.
The round area in red would be a pea-stone patio. So hundred percent pervious area, just an outdoor amenity space.
That fence is gonna stand over?
It goes right, right by it, jogs over and goes right by it up to McDonald Terrace.
So the fence goes right across it?
No, it makes a ninety-three turn on the toilet or shed property by about six feet.
Yeah, I think the fence actually turns like that.
It makes a ninety-three turn.
It's a little hard to tell.
Oh, this fence lets go?
No, it doesn't.
Straight and then comes over.
Yeah, you just can't see it here. You can see it on that drawing picture.
I can't see that drawing.
That's far away. I need to do something with the white rocks, so we're open to suggestions. What do you think? I mean, do we agree that that could be our, well, problem, problem here?
Yes, the riprap. I can look at the fence, but the riprap, not so much.
I said, I don't think we would have approved that riprap as you, as we told you. So Mr. Pritchard said, let's figure out a solution to the riprap. So would you plant something in the riprap?
We could do plantings in the riprap. We could put the joint.
I would suggest that you ask for a detail and how they propose to do it. I think, I think that's unexpected, yes. I think you have to decide if this is a field modification or, or if this is a field change or a modification. Because if it's a modification, then that has to be advertised as a special permit. If it's a field change, then we don't need to advertise. So it's up to the board whether you want it as a field change or not. So we'll take your stronghold. Mr. Bornting?
Um, I don't have the original plan in front of me at the moment, but I, I've. I, I just feel, I feel like the addition of the fencing and the ripraps is a, is a fairly significant modification to the original landscape plan or like the design intent of the site. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm inclined to call it more of a modification, I guess.
Mr. Burwood? Fence is a beautiful, so modification.
Stephen, to that.
Mr. Pritchard?
I, I tend to agree as well. I don't think this is something we would have approved. And we would have looked at it much more carefully. We believe this was the plan, so I would say it's modification as well.
So we're going to admit that this is a modification and not field change. Okay? So we've got a C P C plan. We'll have to do a public hearing with the Butter application. So you'll have to give us a new Butter list. And how quickly can you get something in?
Um, we'll get something in early next week, Monday Tuesday.
Well.
Totally scheduled.
We can, we, I, I'm not gonna commit right now to December eighth, but it's gonna be, we can, we can do it December eighth or December fifteenth. We're meeting twice in December, one week apart. And depending on when you get the stuff in, is when we, when we write a legal act and get, and get the, get a modification going.
Let me ask a couple of follow-up questions on that too. If the riprap was to be eliminated, put down grass there essentially, which is what was there previously. And the fence along that side was eliminated in its entirety. The addition of the fence at the back of the parking lot, is that something that could be considered a field change? Is that something we could get off reservation to move forward with just that piece? Or is that a major modification for just that fence? I'd also like to know about the, the patio. Can we consider that a major change? Or that was, again, that was area that was just proposed to be lawn area, putting a pea-stone patio. Trying to wrap the site up, trying to get, kind of finish landscaping going, so we can finish those areas. Great.
I personally don't have a problem with, I go to the back fence for the patio. That's my personal opinion.
I'm, I'm agreeing with Matt.
I agree.
So what's that mean you would do with the, with the riprap?
So, so I, yeah, I think, you know, I'll certainly talk to Bob and, you know, if he decides to forego that fence with the riprap, we would just put in, you know, grass, just grass plants there on that slope instead of the riprap, if you remove it.
Not even grass too much. It's something that creeps. And how would you maintain it if, if you said?
The way that it was maintained previously, it was proved, which is it's become a little bit overgrown in the building. But it's a slope that would be grassed and vegetated.
So you all planned all along to have it overgrown it, et cetera?
Essentially, it was a field grass area, you know, prior to this development being in there, it was overgrown grass. We would put it back as grass. On building, it's not visible to anyone. Certainly, the area along the side of the building, it's all area that would be landscaped and be grassed and would have plantings on. I specified on the approved plan by Kennedy somewhere, so, but. It sounds like Bob removed the riprap before went the fence. We could move forward with the patio and the fence at the back of the parking lot, approximately forty feet or thirty-two feet by that garage in the interim.
I'd still like to know what the finished plantings for the slope. Cause you've now disturbed the slope, changed the slope, now you're gonna change it back, so what's it gonna look like?
So it would be a two-to-one grass slope?
And it stays like that?
Would you mess, mesh the grass?
You can maintain it that way?
You can.
You can't mow it. You cannot mow a two-to-one slope.
It would be the same as in front of the Widow's Walk Golf Course, the same grass slope that you have along the entire frontage of that new parking lot that was built. Be a two-to-one slope.
So what are you gonna do?
It'd become slightly overgrown. You'd mow it with a weed whacker. You wouldn't use a typical lawnmower. You'd use a weed whacker to maintain it on the time.
Do you have an alternative to grass? Would you, would you suggest a plan besides grass? Alternative what sort?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't really feel comfortable working as a designer right now, to be honest. Um, I'd rather see a plan presented than have to do that on the fly.
Me too.
When, when you can, first we're telling us, were there five things that you said or was it four?
There, there's, there's five. We never got to the fifth one.
Copy that?
Yeah, that'd be great. The original plans at the top left corner of the property had a trash bin enclosure. It was to be constructed right here. Each unit essentially had its own trash barrel. They were gonna be built in an enclosure. Yeah, we'd like to modify that and put a dumpster on the property. The dumpster I've highlighted in yellow would be kind of centered on that back midpoint of the parking lot. You know, since the property next door was in eighteen four place, there's already a trash truck coming to the property. It's easier for the residents of this building, instead of doing it themselves, to just have it done by a trash service. That dumpster location is easy to access. It would be an enclosed dumpster pad. It would have fencing around it. That's the change that we request.
And it's gonna fit in that space?
It does. It fits in that space.
So if I understand you, if we take out the riprap and we take out the side fence, what is to authorize that as a field change and not a modification?
Correct.
I'm going to go about that. Mr. Bornting?
I mean, I think it's more, it's certainly less of a change than the original plan. And I think it's less, you know, visually impactful, the other items than, than those two particularly, but. I, I mean, it's, it's. It's kind of six in one, half dozen the other to me. It's really, it's really up to the applicant about, you know, I, I feel like this project was, is coming along nicely. The building and everything, and just a shame that to, you know, at, at the end, we're kind of talking about kind of just not the best looking solution for, for the space. You know, whatever was on the original plan, if that's the intent that's to be followed, then I don't see how that is a major modification because that's what was approved.
What was the grade on the original slope that was approved?
Two-one.
I think one thing that we should start requiring is. I think one thing that we should start requiring is, slopes, if it's a two-to-one slope, you write two-to-one slope. Three-to-one slope, you write three-to-one slope, because I don't think everybody picks up on the slopes. I mean, because I, we had another project where we didn't pick up on the slope and it's, it's a major maintenance headache.
So, and Mr. Bornstein has indicated that he would like to see detailed ways to get plans for everybody, but for me now, does that take just one heading in here? Um, so do we feel that this is just now a field change as opposed to a modification? If you don't reach it?
Uh, what did they ask for?
Take out the riprap?
You, you gotta, you gotta decide what you want here. So we won't make a decision.
So it would be the fence out back along the neighbor's garage, patio on the side of the building, and the dumpster in lieu of the individual enclosures.
I think, and you still have to come back, modify whatever you're doing here on the slope.
So on the, on the slope, we will go with the original plan, which is we'll remove the riprap, we'll plant grass in its place, and we won't put a fence on that side.
Are these part of the original, the plantings as well?
Those are all the original approved plantings. No changes to come in.
Yeah, I, you know, it kind of like, you know, it's sort of six in one, half dozen the other at this point, you know. I, I think the biggest problem of all this is this riprap look. Also going to take the fence look, this is a great area, but it would have been better to look at this as the original design, not some of the, you know, last minute change. But if you're taking it off the table, then it's off the table. You're going to have to go back and restore the slope to be sure it's stabilized and maintained. So just, just to be clear, right, you plant that, it's not an excuse because you can't get a lawnmower out there that you don't maintain. It still has to be maintained. And then jungle for other people to look at, basically. That's kind of like it.
Yeah, are you, yeah? Everybody, do you want to move the pole?
I think that if you want to, if, if all they're proposing is the 40-foot fence, the 40-foot fence in the back, the patio and the dumpster, then someone can make a motion to do that as a field change.
I have one further question. If it's two-to-one slope and this no, I retract that, I'll make a motion to have those three items.
Just a second, second. All in favor?
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all in favor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The question becomes, when are you going to remove the riprap? Because, you know, you're coming, we're starting to come into the rainy season and, you know, it, it needs to be stabilized and no, no sediment can leave that immediate area.
We understand that, it's stuck in progress this time of year, we're writing.
I, I understand it, I mean, yeah, you can't, you have to grow grass, you're outside the planting season to grow grass.
Thank you.
Now we have seven, we're going to have discussion of proposed zoning for parking. Looks like my little housekeeping changes mostly for me, other people may go differently.
The only thing I want to get rid of is tandem parking.
Well, Anne, we're not going to get, I don't think the advisor will get rid of tandem parking, because you have situations on like 14 to 16 Country Way where that technically is tandem parking.
I understand, but that's having been to traffic rules and they're talking about from a public safety standpoint, if somebody needs to, currently can't move it.
Well, so then you don't approve the special permit on that.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't mind. Uh-huh. Because, I mean, for a lot of us, you have a car in the garage, or a car in the two cars, you have a car in the garage, you have a car in the back, you're all the same hot. I understand what you're saying, like, I don't think it is feasible, I mean, we can't even entertain the thought of having two-car drivers everywhere we go to town.
No, you can't, right.
So without the, that would use that off single, that's all. Anybody else have an issue with anything?
Can, can we just walk through the changes and show? Try to understand why we're making the changes. So the off-street parking requirement, you're saying the outdoor seating cafe are not exempt from off-street parking requirements?
That's what, that's a proposed change, yes?
Can I ask why?
Um, in my discussions with the building department, they thought that that would be, you know, whether, you know, seating inside or outside, what's the difference? Because you still need a parking space for it. I know that the, I asked this specific question when we were first doing the zoning and the consultant said, well, you want to encourage outdoor seating, and so that's why they excluded outdoor cafes. But parking's parking and it's tight. Everywhere.
So what's the, what's the practical impact of this change then? So, so the outdoor seating cafe, somebody needs to evaluate how much seating they have out there and provide additional parking spaces on top of what they already have?
Yes. Well, for new proj, for projects going forward.
For projects going forward?
For projects going forward.
But this doesn't apply to any existing project?
It's, yeah, no. Because if they got a permit when it was pre-existing, we'll, we'll use the gas station as an example. They, they have, you know, they have, they're going to have outdoor pa, you know, tables and they kind of said, well, the parking spaces were figured for the, the tables. So in the wintertime, they can have more inside, in the summertime, you know, they, they lose some inside, but have some outside.
So just tell me how, if, if somebody had seating for 15 and 20 outdoors, how much parking do they need?
It's one space, um, one table, one space for four seats.
Okay, so, if I mean significantly, like, they need five parking spaces?
So it could. It could. A good amount to two or three, you know, for outdoor seating, if you have that much outdoor seating in addition to their indoor seating.
Right. And right now, they don't need.
Right now, they don't need it. You still need, you need to meet the requirements for inside the building.
No, I just, I, I, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, right.
Tire car people who don't sit outside, that they need to be, you know, parking, not a bus can be parked.
I mean, so it's a suggestion, if the board doesn't like it, we.
No, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm understanding, I'm trying to understand what's behind the suggestion, so I'm and then what's the next change we're talking about here? So we're saying we could decrease off-street parking. But we can't increase it.
Right. Because this was already a parking reduction method. I think the language just
Yeah.
makes it more, it clarifies what we're really asking for, I, it's semantics here.
No, that, that makes sense.
I think it makes a lot of sense for the clarification, the language.
It could, this, this could also apply to outdoor seating cafes? We, the board could
Yeah, yes.
Provide a reduction?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you meet all these requirements, the big, the big change is in number four, off-site parking. It says the planning board may allow required parking provided off-site for employees. If we strike that, it could be, you could have off-site parking for the use as well. But you have to meet these conditions.
And that's what you were talking about, if we had somebody moving cars? Dally parking? Dally parking.
But, right, and dally parking is, dally parking is allowed right now off-site.
It is, and is this changing it?
No, 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 I wasn't proposing to change anything there.
So this isn't really addressing dally parking then?
No. Dally parking is never due in there. It directs you to a lot of off-site parking for employees. This is to allow off, just take off the employees, it's to allow.
So somebody opened a restaurant somewhere in Front Street, then we can say that you park it somewhere else?
Right, and it would give them the option to say, you know, I've rented X spaces from X person and this is going to be my parking for, and they would have to produce, you know, some type of long-term lease, et cetera, et cetera. But it opens up, it opens up parking so that you have more options to consider how it might suit your needs.
Okay. Are there more changes?
And then the last, the street screen, it's, I mean, it's just saying wall or fence or landscaping, so that, you know, which is what, which is what, um.
It's saying a wall or fence plus landscaping?
Yes, yes. So that you have, it's giving the options, is what it says.
I just dropped the word impervious, meaning that we're not intending to have a hard barrier.
But I guess I read that a different way, if I read
What, what did you read it as?
If I read site impervious screen, I'm thinking that the wrong word we should use to begin with. I, I mean, I think when they say, I think that they mean 100% no gaps.
Right, that's what I, that's going to impervious speech, right?
Right, right, and so, I mean, if you do a landscape screen, you might have
Right. That's what you're changing.
Some. Yeah, right, that's, right.
Well, we always think these changes are easy and they never are. But I think that this off-site parking, not going to harbor a lot, hopefully in the future, in the future.
Yeah, I mean, the threshold's pretty high, it's not like, oh, there's public parking somewhere else, so that's really okay. What you're saying is that you have to actually have dedicated. The only thing I'd like to make sure is that we have some flexibility around the the outdoor seating cafes. Say we have, we have that somewhere, but that's fine. In words, you know, somebody has an outdoor seating and there's some flexibility we can have around it, I would prefer to do that, to encourage people to continue to have outdoor seating. As opposed to rule it out because they can't find five parking spaces.
So how, what is your, what's your suggestion for, for that?
Just to give the board discretion around that particular department. On where you put it, or whether that's in here somewhere.
Okay, so outdoor seating cafes and accessory buildings are exempt from off-street parking requirements at the discretion of the planning board? Okay.
Yeah, Lawrence?
Yeah, Steve, to your point, I, I think that makes sense as well, because I was thinking about it and to me, for instance, let's say a new ice cream store wants to open up, which is primarily, you know, a counter service, but they want to add a couple picnic benches or something. That, to me, is different than a restaurant that's adding full table service, where you make a reservation and seat and you have waiters and waitresses that serve you. Um, in terms of like what the actual use is in terms of the vehicles that are going to be making trips and parking and all of that.
I agree. There's a lot more stuff to it.
All right, so we don't have any, right, okay. We don't, I will change that for next week's zoning workshop.
So we'll send you. So, I'm guessing anybody has any other comments on it?
No.
Do I want? So we have to decide a, 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 we don't have.
We don't have, we don't, they can't.
Okay, no, but they can't. So we have two minutes? You do have a lot of time at the end.
Yeah. I love this.
I'll pass control paper.
I guess I'll be seeing a lot of this page. I will report the minute, meeting minutes for October 27th, 2022.
All in favor, Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchett?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis? Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
And Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
And in and of something.
Finish this with the counting?
No counting.
No, 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 yes. Okay, so we guys have the course? I'm going to, I, I, I went to zones above Old Oak Bucket project, that's been put up now to January, but it has been reduced from 32 to 24.
Yeah.
It dropped eight units. They're seeking moving right along. What about water in the basements that they have to be rough? So I'll let him sub host fee. So, uh, because it's up there on the block and, uh, so that kind of way, way to look at it, but, um, they, they're moving right along with that, and under that, we have the most.
And CPC meets on, um, Monday night, people will be going over and they want to somebody wants to come for, what was it?
Pickleball.
Thank you, pickleball, $500,000 for pickleball. And the other one in Windows for, you know, cockpits, another $500,000. And then they want, um, what else is there on, just five things, I think. A lot of money is, is coming through.
Yeah.
It's 12 items.
We're 15, are we two of them?
No, it's 12. And then they want to revamp the dinosaur playground up in North Stitute, this talk of play, another playground in Wampanoag. I know that they finished the canopy in North Stitute, but they're looking for money for what I have more clue. So Monday night should be a very interesting CPC meeting.
Well, their purple dinosaur has a great ground style, I mean, they have a big presence and they do a ton of one racing there.
Good, because it is a place for, um,
Little children, right?
Right, for two little kids.
At the purple dinosaur.
Right, two years old.
Yeah.
But it becomes a temple for, um, flavored toys.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah.
So every so often, DPD has to come in and clean out all the rest. So, but it's 30 years old.
Is it?
No, it's not that.
No, it's not that, but it's, it's about 25 or 25.
It's one. Yes.
Yeah, it's way too young, my kids are little.
Right.
I took my kid to it, so.
It's been there for quite a while.
It needs a look.
It does.
It does, it needs a look. So, and I know, and that's, anybody else have, we have a director, some territory for?
Want to traffic rules?
Oh, yes.
And I will say that the members of traffic rules were absolutely blown away by our tenant planners' knowledge and her ability to and her ability to explain to them sixty-one in Driftway and thirty-three in the flow. So we are meeting traffic rules this weekend again on the thirtieth, which I think they hopefully will attend to, um, get something in writing in response to the issues that were brought up in terms of those two applications. And then to, um, Watercoast Lincoln was looking to become one-way, but they're not gonna be able to do that really. Plus the tracks, the bridge. Billy Sestino, who's the tenant of the fire department, was saying he does not allow any of the fire trucks, especially the lab truck, to go open that bridge because of, oh, the fire trucks, which is really exciting. And, um, like the usual discussion about traffic signs and people speeding and and also to, they want a sidewalk and that was discussed at the selectments meeting along Haveli Road, which cost almost six million dollars.
So weird.
Huh?
They want to go from Orchard Beach to the lights they get.
That was the selectments meeting.
Right, through your front, yeah.
Did you wear my hat, too?
So it's just because people are blocking with double strollers and dogs down, um, Haveli Road and it is dangerous, but then if you want, it's common sense, let's build it. You don't do that.
A lot of people entirely attraction to live in and serve the areas there is because you can walk to the beach.
Yeah.
So I see people, you know, who live on the beach, in Haveli, or at least from the lights going uh, towards Van El, you know, they are walking because
Yeah.
they don't wanna drive. There's a place to park there, you know, especially if they're going right at, right at the opening line.
This isn't their, this isn't their tenement sort of priority, uh, side goal.
Yes, so they are going to reconstitute, um, the sidewalk and street acceptance program.
Well, side, right now, an email came out today that I received and Patty received is chair of the planning board. They would like a member of the planning board, um, to, they're gonna revamp the sidewalk committee and start to figure out, we have a two thousand and seven sidewalk study that some of the stuff has been done and, um, we also have a two thousand and nineteen Complete Streets thing, um, report summary and I think that the two of them at some point should probably mesh, but they wanna revamp the sidewalk committee and have, um, a meeting, um, in the next, they're trying to set up a meeting, so they want somebody from planning, DPDW, school committee.
Place.
Uh, place, um, and everyone which is going to be leading this. So Patty has offered to do this from the planning board if everyone's okay with that.
I'll take that.
Oh, all right.
Can we then start a day?
Because DPDW's not gonna come. It's harder for the fire to watch the.
When it goes to sidewalks, which I'm sure has nothing to do with the concept of why. That was just enough, see, New York, we have those nice sidewalks with the square.
Yeah.
Why don't we use those anymore? Just too expensive.
It's not much more.
Just the big square. You know, just the big square.
Even cost.
Concrete, concrete?
Yeah.
Because it's just more expensive than notably black.
Concrete is more expensive than asphalt, yes.
And it doesn't hold up with the solid, right?
Well, concrete's fine.
Concrete is fine. I mean, it holds, it holds up.
It's just, it's just more expensive.
I think it's just more expensive.
Isn't that weird?
Yeah.
Okay. Con- with concrete, you either need, or it's more advisable to have a granite curb or a turned down concrete edge so that, you know, lasts longer and to, you know, oftentimes you, you don't want anybody jumping up on the sidewalk with a car either. So that's why.
Well, the concrete goes, you know, well, where, you know, it's a sidewalk, it's grass and then usually earth. Oftentimes, you're so.
Right, but a lot of times, sometimes, right, grass, right.
They probably built them back in the day.
In the day, in the day.
But if you're getting sidewalk committee, I'd like someone to tell me if they can actually get a double stroller down the country looking because
I know they can't.
they can't. So what was the point of that?
Well, that was a word for, that was, that was, that that was, that was one of those whoops, we made mistake things.
No, 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 technically, I only need a certain amount of clearance. And it's prob- it's it's the ADA acceptable and I I don't wanna, I think it's three feet, six inches, but it could be three feet four, three feet two, and that's why, that's why it's acceptable because you only need that amount, a double stroller is bigger than three feet and six inches.
Okay. And obviously you give it to them wide, but then they put the, we'll go back here, but that, but then they put the mailboxes in it and then there's all phone poles in the middle.
Right, but the tele- the mailboxes should be, I mean, yes, there's the telephone poles, but from the telephone pole to the backside is generally meets the measurement. I know Sean, I I think Sean measured.
Technically power poles.
Yeah, most of them.
Whatever they are.
Whatever they are, power poles, but I mean, then they turn, then they do turn the mailboxes, but if the mailbox is right at the front, I'm not defending it. I'm just saying that, you know, you have requirements.
So it's so you notice that when they go to want to go, um, down here in a row, that did not happen again. It's kind of a word for, I think that was one of those whoops.
You don't have to build them required.
Yeah, you don't have to build them.
Yeah, yes.
You know, especially if it's going up Haveli Road, like people, you see people that are dragging, um,
Wagons.
wagons behind, um, you know, they're going to the beach, they got a lot of stuff. I mean, obviously not gonna fit huge, but
Yeah.
just.
That should, that should be noted.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a really good observation to note, you know, during those meetings.
Yeah.
That would be a very expensive sidewalk and it has, it's got a lot of wetlands issues and stuff like that.
I mean, it's just like one of those places to be, um, the little bridge there.
Yeah.
Well, that would, that would take a lot of people off the road coming from, coming up Gannett.
Yeah.
I don't think, because of all the rest of the people, once you go uphill, they can cut down
Quite to do.
and they should cut across that pond on that perimeter, you can cross the middle of the pond. I'm not that it makes any difference, but there really should be a sidewalk from the Compass Line to the train station.
Well, that's on the list, actually.
And you know what? This is what really upsets me about a lot of this stuff. When I was with them at DC, not in a social coalition, Mass Highway was willing to, uh, put in that sidewalk. We just had to come up with the engineering. And, um, it was told that we did not want to benefit.
Well, I think that a lot of that has changed, especially with, with the developments.
I hope so. Yeah.
The the sidewalk study was designed on the school was originally, but there's a whole, I think, they give you a whole list of what was supposed to be and a lot of, what was on there is already been done, but you have to experience that, so I just.
Well, um, I know that Tom Carr, who's involved with the mitigation for North Stitute, the train.
Yeah, maybe.
He and I were co-chairs of that and he was adamant about having a sidewalk from, again, pasture down to North Stitute. So they kept saying, well, it's not gonna happen because of all the wetlands crossing. You know what? They managed to do it.
Yeah.
It can be done. It can be done.
But well, like I said, that would be reconstituted, that would be an interesting thing to see when the development actually has occurred, that's probably the issue, so. Um, and so most of the schools, I mean, you know, they're talking for years about putting it in our way, but we think cushy's going away, so
Yeah.
you know, you got the problem, put it where you are, there's a million kids, a hundred twenty-two kids in that neighborhood. So, well, I'll, I'll report back to what we can get done. Hopefully, it will be done super early than later.
What was the com- complete streets that you were talking about?
Submitted, uh, there was, um, um, Mass Doc, you know, they submitted, um, this hazardous table of the twenty, I think they really had nineteen or twenty prioritizations for, um, the streets and I don't know, the first one, it was Country Way and that that's dumb. But, you know, they they've outlined certain, DPDW outlined certain projects and that needed that they would seek money for, you know, periodically.
They make up money for the, you know, sidewalk that went on Paul Street.
Yeah. That's it. I was just gonna get it, see, I thought it was, yeah, another channel. So this is, there are three, four stages of stuff I have to go work at to see if it's gonna be here. But I think one of the interesting things that I did not know was that if you go down Old Ford, you have to walk down to the end of the school. Crazy. There's no sidewalk up there. No, no, you have less than a mile. So, you know, if you cross here at the school, it only goes up from Spanish, but if you're to go to Old Ford, there's no way the kids can get up there. And it is a no-.
I haven't seen a sidewalk since. No, we haven't seen a sidewalk within a mile.
Well, there you go. So that's something we have to look at.
But that's also Mass Highway.
That's Mass Highway. It's it's, we have wide, we have wide shoulders.
You get that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that a bus that goes up there? I can still be honest.
It paid for it.
It paid for it.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fair.
It's right, I have to, we have to do that.
Yeah. But there will be a sidewalk from, um, Beachwood down to, um, Intermodal Valley Road, which will connect to get past it when they redo three, uh.
A sidewalk?
Yes, it would be, there would be lights at, at Intermodal Valley Road, but.
Well, not much to advise about that, that's what I can tell.
I drove around Harvard Square today.
Yeah.
With traffic. And not so much the traffic, the bike lane, the traffic.
Yeah.
The turkeys running through the middle of the street. The people crossing the middle street as slow as I could possibly stop it. I'm like, we just let it go.
Alright, so there's two other.
You can't treat so seriously to do anything.
Points of interest, Old Driftway was paved the other day, it's, we striped on Monday. Uh, Currys Estates was paved and, um, you know, we're, we remain very busy.
Gas station looks pretty nice. I wouldn't dare the other day.
Did you? Is it inside open?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, the one side is, yeah.
I know, you just looked, I I thought it, I couldn't tell.
Yeah, and it's, it has a, both sides have temporary ceiling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, it's nice that the pots are all the back, actually, it looks very nice. Now, did you ask for chicken?
You can ask for chicken.
Was it?
So, okay, would you like to move on?
I'm looking to.
Yes, I can.
All in favor, Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Burbank?
Yes.
Ms. Forsen?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor. We are very.
Bye.
Bye bye, thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Enjoy your trip.
Thanks, girl.
So we have a lot of signing. Not too much.
You're doing a good job.
Well, there's sixty-one.
Number of times.
Sixty-one meters, twenty?
It's crazy, yeah.
It's not until, um.